Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the December 12th Town of Kensington Town Council meeting. All right, um, so first item on the agenda is a moment of silence. I think everyone on the call already knows, but I definitely wanna to lift up Jeff, Jack Gaffey's family. Jack passed away on November 29th. And he will be really missed in this town. He was a fixture, if you will, around town and he was always there, came to every town meeting. We missed him last, last month, he was in the hospital and, but he always gave us the star when the stars were going to be in aligned and full moons. And so we're, we're gonna really miss him. So is there anybody else that has something for the agenda? I mean, excuse me, for a moment of silence? No, okay, if we can just bow our heads for a few minutes? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Council, did everybody have a chance to go through the minutes? I don't recall seeing any corrections. Okay, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of November 15th, 2022.
Is there a second? A second. Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
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 Great, thank you very much, thank you Susan. All right, uh, gonna move down to the first item on the agenda is the Brookside Apartments. This is something that Anne and I've been working on, but Anne's taken the lead on this, so I'm gonna let her talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor Tracy. Just wanna provide an update. Some of you may be familiar with the Brookside Apartments. These are the apartments that are across from Kensington House, right behind Clum Kennedy Garden on Frederick Avenue. And for years, they've been owned and operated by the Mormon Church and used primarily for their folks who are here traveling on business or here as missionaries with the church. They haven't been occupied for a while, they've undergone renovation. And then some of you may have heard, uh, cause word was circulating in the neighborhood that they were looking to possibly sell that apartment building. So about a month ago, uh, maybe a little longer than a month ago, but it's all been pretty recent. We reached out through our town manager to the church so we could learn more about their plans to sell the building and see what their timing was and if there was any interest in exploring opportunities to preserve that housing asset in our community in a way that would make it accessible to, to local people. And what we learned was that it had indeed already been listed and they referred us to their broker and invited us to come look and, and see if there was any interest. Uh, I think they had a fair amount of interest in the property and putting a bid together. And Mayor Tracy, um, and obviously Tracy, feel free to jump in here. I think around this point, when you realized how fast things were moving, you alerted some other folks in the county that, that this property was on the market.
Yeah, we, we reached out to County Executive Mark Elrich.
And so, uh, for Thanksgiving, we were able to tour the property. The county executive joined us along with some other organizations that he had invited to come look at the property. For example, Montgomery Housing Partnership, HOC. I believe Mayor Tracy also invited Jubilee and they had a representative there to see what was available. And while there, um, and, and these are, you know, it's a lovely building, it's been well maintained, it's a great location. While there, we were able to share an idea of possibly looking to use the building and convert it to an ownership opportunity. And this idea is really one that comes from conversations we've had with many residents who recognize that with the housing market that we're in, where you have rapid escalation of prices, a lot of people are priced out of the market. Um, and it's hard for many people who live and work in our community to access ownership and build equity and have the stability that comes with homeownership. And at a recent Maryland Municipal League meeting, we learned that some other communities like College Park have been, uh, dealing with the same challenge by putting together a community land trust, which is a way to, uh, have a nonprofit, typically a nonprofit, um, hold property and maintain its affordability over time by enabling people to buy, uh, basically a ground lease. So the trust owns the property, but the, or owns the land, but homeowners can buy a unit or buy the house within the trust. And over time, as equity accrues, uh, as property transfers, then, um, the equity is shared between the homeowner and the trust. And that way you're able to sort of maintain affordability in a community. So that's just one example of a model, uh, that has been, uh, done in other communities and has been, you know, started now by College Park. And when we expressed our interest in making more ownership opportunities that were accessible to community members available, um, that seemed to be well received. But again, uh, this is all very early and as a community, um, we would have to figure out, you know, what our role could be in something like this. Now to bring it up to sort of the current state of play, um, our understanding is that, uh, bids were due on the building uh, last week. I'm sure that a number of bids were, um, received. We have to see how that process plays out. Uh, we understand that the Montgomery Housing Partnership did put a bid in and we understand from our conversations with them that they too are interested in developing some type of ownership model, um, as a, as a, um, potential use of this property. At this point, our role is really to, um, help serve as a convenor and, and engage our community and understanding how something like that might work, uh, and what our role could be. Tracy, are there other key points that I left out that we should raise?
I just wanna emphasize that our goal has always been that we wanna see ownership, that this was a way to build the equity, it was a way to have the advantages of homeownership, you know, through tax, you know, your mortgage that you can write off interest and that you can have assurances that your rent's not gonna go up, you know, uh, a lot during, you know, every, um, whenever the lease is up. So, so it's been our goal and I don't think this has happened here in Montgomery County, but it's happened in other places in the, you know, particularly PG County has done it and some other areas. So this is what has, um, been of interest, particularly to our county executive, that he would like to see this model. And this seems to be a good candidate in which to try it on. So, uh, it's very, be very similar to kind of what Warner, um, you know, the, the land does not go with the property or the house or the structure. So, um, now those are not affordable condos, but these would be in an affordable model. So I think we have plenty of room to have both types of housing.
So I could share more details of some of the learning we've been doing, but, um, and this is all quite preliminary and we're not quite in the driver's seat since we're not putting a bid on, on the building. But, um, I'm also happy to, um, take questions from the council to begin or.
Okay, council, do you have any questions before we open it up to the public?
Mine would be, uh, and just where the conversations that you've had so far with, uh, Montgomery Housing Partnership? Just to shed a little more light and expand on that.
Just to hear a little bit more about my conversations with them?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's been rather preliminary, um, but my understanding is, uh, after seeing the building and, and hearing our conversation about the value of, of promoting new ownership models, particularly in this, you know, wonderful setting that we have, um, they had some internal discussions and agreed that this was a good, um, size building to, uh, attempt a, a new ownership approach. The details of that, we didn't really get into discussing because it's too preliminary. First, they would have to, you know, win the bid on the, on the, on the building and go through, you know, the typical due diligence process that happens in a real estate transaction. But what I, I shared is essentially what I've just shared here is that the town is an interested stakeholder and potential partner, that we would wanna engage our community and, you know, discussing the, the potential model, um, and, uh, presumably if, if we were in support, you know, would look for ways to help make it happen.
And I, I think Artie indicated that this was going to be at least an eight-month process at the minimum. Do you remember him saying that, Anne? Because they have to, you know, they have to, they'll do their due diligence. If they get the building, they have to do their due diligence on the building, check for lead, check for asbestos and, you know, the other things and, um, then they have to, um, they have to build it. I mean, in the sense of build the contract and the, the trust, they have to leak, do the legal documentation. So I think it pretty much was about an eight-month process in which.
Now, I don't, I don't remember a specific timeline. I, I do know it's like certain probably, you know, 90-day period of due diligence after a contract and then just learning from what we learned about College Park's process with the trust. You know, that was a multi-step process and a phased process. So I, I couldn't give a definitive answer on the timing.
Okay, well, we can follow up with him on that, but it, I do remember like a six to eight-month timeframe. So, okay, uh, any other questions from the council before I open it up to the residents?
Yeah, um, I have two quick questions, one, one point and a question, but first just to thank Anne and, and Tracy for the work on this. I think it's an excellent initiative and I fully support it. I actually think I'd like to hear a little bit more on your thoughts of, you know, maybe even just separating these, the, the issue of this, specifically the Brookside Apartments and then in general creating a community land trust, because I think we should do it regardless, uh, for future such projects that could come up that we could help to, to, to put into the trust. So, you know, I would be in, in support of doing it regardless of how it shakes out with, um, with this particular property. And then I wondered if you could share, I know it's very early on, but to the broader point of setting up a, a community land trust, did you have any thoughts on how, you know, we might capitalize it? Would we get, you know, probably some from our budget, I'm sure, maybe grants from the county, support from the county, developers when they're doing projects, they could put money into the, the trust, I'm assuming. Do you have, do you have thoughts on that?
Um, so I'll take the first point that, you know, even if the Brookside Apartment Building doesn't turn out, let's say it goes to, the, the deal goes to another bidder and they wanna keep it as a rental property and are not interested in being part of a community land trust. I agree, it is still worth exploring the concept of establishing a community land trust in Kensington. One of the things that I think is really compelling about this model is that you can have non, once you've established a trust with a governing entity, um, you can have non-contiguous property in the trust. So as properties came on the market, the trust could acquire them and then make them available, uh, to, um, qualified homeowners in the future, uh, and keep them more affordable. So for example, we have this challenge in the town of Kensington and in the greater Kensington community where, you know, the 1950s, um, what we might call a starter home, uh, gets torn down and a $1.6 million mansion goes up. And you're, you're losing the diverse housing stock that has long defined our community and has given people access to homeownership. And so with a trust, you could see that when mark properties like that came on the market, provided you have the capital, you could acquire them into the trust and preserve some of that diversity of housing stock and the opportunity for homeownership. In terms of how you would capitalize it, um, I, I can share the, the little bit I know about what College Park did. And they started off, or they are starting off with a $13.9 million investment. Now they are in a partnership with the university. They have access to other resources, but a big chunk of that money came from their ARPA dollars as well as state funds. Uh, I think there were three different sources that they were able to obtain. So we would need to explore that to see, you know, obviously we're a much smaller municipality with a smaller budget. We'd have to, we'd have to understand, you know, what we would feel comfortable, uh, contributing. But I think clearly you would need the other resources outside the town, um, from other state or federal sources to, to capitalize a trust.
Okay, thank you. Tracy, you're muted.
Helen Wilks is on the call. She could speak to it after we've gone through some other questions, but, um, there is the Kensington Land Trust. It's, uh, usage is a little bit different. It's not to, it's to preserve open space more than it is to provide housing. But, um, I'll let Helen speak to that if she wishes. Okay, any other questions from the council?
I'll, I'll just say quickly, um, I, I think this is an opportunity that, that I, I fully support. But I also support it not just because everything about it is meritorious as far as homeownership and building equity and, and kind of the generational wealth that, that we talk about people wanting. To demonstrate, um, county, whenever it implements Thrive, to allow a variety of options and, and not to simply say, "Well, let's bulldoze through single-family housing zoning", because that will provide what they euphemistically call it, middle, missing middle housing, when I think this proposal has a much more realistic option to provide affordable housing. So I, I, I think it's a great idea.
I think what, one of the things that has made it such a great opportunity for this type of, um, setup is the fact that the, the building is empty, so you're not, um, dealing with the tenants that are already there and if they don't wanna participate or they don't wanna buy, obviously they, they can stay. And so the fact that the building is empty, the fact that the building has been completely renovated is just, uh, it's kind of a win-win for this opportunity. So, um, okay, uh, Jody, I see your hand up.
Um, just a, a couple of questions. How, how many units is, is in the building?
Thirty-four, Anne? Thirty-four?
Sounds right, it might be a little higher than that, but I don't have the number at my fingertips.
And you know how many bids were put in? Who else has put in bids for the property?
I do not, I think it was at least three to four, according to the real estate agent when we went through that were thinking about putting in bids. I don't know the total.
Okay, so Montgomery County Partnership, they would, in this instance, they would run the, the, um, land trust.
Well, no, we wouldn't probably do it. We may be part of it, we'll have to see, um, but right now, um, we've not been invited to participate yet. It's just to be clear, Montgomery Housing Partners is an agency, they're a quasi, they're not really a government of Montgomery County. They're, they're kind of, they're like HOC, which is a quasi-government.
Montgomery Housing, okay.
Yeah.
So they'd have to make them all into condos and they'd have to go through that whole process, I assume.
Right, yeah, exactly what form of governance the community land trust would take in relation to MHP or another partner would have to be figured out. There, there are, um, there are rules in the Maryland code about how it would be done and, um, and there are a number of different options for how it could be structured.
Okay, I think it's great. I think, I think if, if they win the bid, I think that would be just really, really wonderful for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, I see your hand up.
Yeah, hi, um, so I wanted to know, uh, the, so the, the property in the, the zoning area, I know that it is not just, um, it's not just the, uh, the condos that are there, but there's also residential property that is contiguous that zoned differently. And so do you happen to know when they were bidding that out, if that was exclusively for the condo kind of property? Or was it, and/or was it also for the other, um, lots too that are zoned separately for single-family dwelling? On the property itself? Yeah, so, um, if you look at the plot, there was one, at one point, I know that, I think it was the town or someone had put together, um, where you could see the aerial shot of what the zone was for all of the different.
Are, are you talking about the paper road that runs along the, uh, the creek?
No, um, so I'm talking, so behind the property, um, in consideration, right now, there's the, um, there's a parking lot, right? Or kind of next to the property, there's a parking lot. And then behind that, there's kind of a wooded area. That area is actually residentially zoned. And my understanding is that the Mormon temple that, 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 that organization also owned that. But I wasn't sure, maybe you have more information on it, but, um, I was just curious if that was part of these discussions.
Uh, I don't think we discussed that at all. We were mainly looking at the apartments that were there.
That did not come up when we did the tour with the broker and it wasn't presented.
As an option of.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that they had the, um, the marketing package about the property and I'll have to look at that again, but I don't recall seeing that it pointed out that there was a separately zoned parcel within.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of the scope of the bid and maybe it is that they're only selling off that piece, um, so, yeah, but just as a flag, okay.
That's a really helpful question, Beth, thank you, and something we can follow up and look into further.
Yeah, we can definitely look into it because it wasn't, uh, presented as separate properties. So the assumption would be that this was all one piece of property, but we can look into that for sure.
Right, well, cause if it's all zoned separately, you can imagine if a builder were to come in, the builder could, would use, potentially use that for different purposes, so, okay, all right.
Well, the, the Montgomery Housing Partnership is not looking to build something different. They're looking to create housing that's currently.
No, but you said that there were three to four bids that came in, so potentially the others.
They could have, but the, um, the Realtor, you know, this is just his take on it. He said the bids that he had talked to, nobody was looking to tear it down and build something else.
Got it.
That was his take at the moment. Um, I know, uh, he did mention that the people that own Kensington House had also looked at the property.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Uh, Helen?
Um, yeah, am I, am I on?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, um, I just wanted to say regarding the Kensington Land Trust, um, it's nominally still in existence, but, um, the model that we've had has, uh, relied on two things. Primarily the county, uh, is the holder of, uh, land easements, um, for the Kensington Land Trust, not the, the land trust itself, because it's all, um, uh, it's focused on the historic district and on preserving, uh, side lots from development. And therefore, um, that is provided for in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, Chapter 24A. And, um, the county so far is the holder of the easements, um, which is good because we have a hard time finding the volunteers, uh, to help, uh, with the land trust. So we got things started, um, but, uh, it's a different model certainly than what is being discussed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're there to preserve open space and, you know.
And it's very important to have the community entity because, um, at any given time, if, if the, the holder of the easement, uh, changes or, or is it, let's say, uh, they're holding the easements, um, let's say there's an administration that is willing to look the other way when violations happen to an easement, even though it's legally enforceable by law, carries, conveys with the deed, et cetera. It, it requires or can depend on a certain public will to, um, reinforce the public, um, benefit aspect of enforcing an easement. So that's why I think it's important that there be a community entity within the town as well as this, you know, I like the idea of this community, um, land trust very much, it sounds great.
Now, in your land trust, I believe the land is donated, it's not purchased, is that correct?
Yeah, it's side yard lots and, and it's not, the land is not donated, it's the development rights.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
So people can just, you know, they can build things, they can write the easement the way they want to and, and then, um, the value of the gift of the easement depends on how much they're willing to give up on, on that developable land.
Right. Okay, thank you Helen for the clarity on that.
Sure.
Okay, Bonita?
Hi, good afternoon. Sorry for a dumb question, um, but it, does this include all of the property, the apartments on Frederick and Kensington Parkway, that whole complete, all of the, these apartments, right? Not just one unit?
Uh, there are three buildings, is that correct, Anne? I think there's three or four buildings, but there's nothing on Kensington Parkway, it's all on Frederick Avenue. The land on Kensington Parkway belongs to Montgomery County Parks.
Right, but the apartments, they are.
The apartments, right.
So that, that's what we're talking about all day.
The garden apartments there on Frederick, right, uh, next to Clum Kennedy.
Not the large Kensington House apartment building.
Yeah, not that.
Across the street.
Yeah, these are the two-story garden apartments.
All of them.
Yes.
Okay, and they're kind of, I know the park is, I know the Montgomery County Parks is there, but they kind of a butt next to the creek on the other side of the creek?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I think it's a wonderful idea to, uh-huh, to have affordable housing. And thank you, that's all.
Anne, he's going out.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, these are the four buildings here.
Yeah.
Just to help for clarity, it's not Kensington House, it's these four here. And to Beth's question before, there are these two lots located in the rear that are undeveloped, that was her question, is, does the real estate transaction, that is, that was recently closed inclusive of these two? Or is it simply the lots that these four buildings and their, you know, their parking lot, their asphalt lots operate on?
Got it, and so the, I see the creek, okay, I get it, okay.
We'll look into that, I, we were not aware that there would, they were selling them separately. As Anne said in the, uh, real estate document, it does not make that clear that there are two additional R60 lots.
But I will say that I, the, the listing itself, uh, includes those two additional lots, which have.
That's it?
Okay. In the illustration, so I think it's all, all one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, I don't see any other hands, um, oops, didn't wanna come up.
Yeah, I raised my hand, Mayor Furman.
And you're, you're not on my page, we're actually on a two-page here, which is really kind of cool. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, uh, was there any indications to when the decision will be made on, on, uh, the respective bidders as to when the properties will be sold?
Uh, I don't think so, Anne?
No, I mean, we can check in after this meeting with the broker to confirm if, if they'll share, you know, how many bids they received and what their timing is, but the, they did have a bid deadline of December 7th or 8th, yeah.
And who is the broker, Anne?
Uh, it is CBRE, I forget what that stands for.
Global Bank of Real Estate, right?
And do you know which office is handling this for CBRE?
It's the Bethesda, I think they have one in Bethesda.
Okay. And, um, what if, if anything is known about the other bidders? Did you get any sense as to who the other bidders might be?
Um, the only one was the owners of the Kensington House, but I don't know if they actually bid on them. They actually, they looked at them.
And then the only other indication is what Tracy already shared, which is that the broker sense from talking to people who had toured the property and seemed interested in putting in a bid is that they all indicated that they were interested in maintaining, um, them as rental properties. So maybe an investment property of some kind.
So, so there were three or four other bidders or prospective bidders?
Perspective. We don't know who actually submitted a bid last week.
Okay.
How many?
I'm here, Furman, you refer to this as an affordable model, and I was just wondering what that means.
Affordable model, it's a, it's the, because the apartments are empty, because they've already been renovated, they don't have to be, you know, there's not a lot of money that they have to now put in by, you know, um, uh, re-renovating, you know, new kitchens, new bathrooms and things like that. This could, this could be something that they could turn around relatively quickly.
So that's what you meant by an affordable model?
Well, I'm not sure I said affordable model, but I said it's a good model for creating this type of opportunity for ownership.
And I'm just wondering, um, and whether any nearby residents were invited to, to join the visits? Or whether their opinions have been, I, I know a few of them have, uh, offered opinions tonight, but I just wonder if they were invited to offer their opinions as this was unfolding?
Um, we are inviting public participation now and in the future.
I understand that, but I just, I was asking whether any nearby residents were invited to.
Well.
To the visits.
There, there was one visit. It all came about very quickly, the day before, or two days before Thanksgiving. Um, and if there is, uh, you know, depending on how this shakes out with the biz, there will certainly be, uh, you know, I would describe a, a robust community engagement process, I think, in order to explore the potential of this community land trust idea that I've shared tonight. We would want to have community workshops to help, uh, engage people in understanding, uh, the different ways this type of model can be set up. Um, to hear examples of what other communities have done, the lessons learned from that. Um, and, um, all of that would, would need to unfold. I think that's, that's why I described this as preliminary and, you know, all of this is a long process, especially since the town itself is not in position, um, to put in a bid.
Any idea what the, um, the bids might be? What, what, what is the asking price for this property? Or property?
Ten and a half million, I think.
Ten and a half million? So it's listed for, okay. And, um, Ann, can you, can you just tell us again why the church is, uh, selling this? They're, they're pulling back for whatever reason, but what is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we all, we didn't learn about, we didn't hear this directly from the church as to why, but I can tell you what the broker shared with us.
Okay.
Um, he explained that, um, you know, for years, the, the National Mormon Temple was one of the primary, you know, religious sites for their community, that a lot of people made pilgrimages here for business. Um, and it really made sense to have, you know, residential offering like the Brookside Apartments in close proximity. But as the church has, has grown and changed over time, they've created, you know, several other religious centers around the world that people travel to. And no longer, um, felt that they needed to maintain, you know, dedicated housing just for this site alone. And I think they were using it for the, um, my understanding, Mayor Tracy, you can confirm this, I think, that during the renovation of, uh, the Mormon temple that just concluded, they were using, um, the residences for some of the workers that were here.
Yeah, they were all pretty much all furnished. It's, it's almost like a Mormon Airbnb for when you came to visit the temple or you came to be, uh, one of the missionaries. So they were just short-term, um, apartments that people could, um, I assume they paid for them. I don't know that, or they just used.
And you mentioned the College Park model a couple of times. Are there any others in, uh, in Maryland or in this area?
Great question, Joe. Um, I was trying to, uh, under Maryland code, um, affordable land trusts are to be registered, um, online. And I, I've done some initial poking around on the S dot website and I haven't found the list. Um, I do know that, um, uh, Blacksburg, Virginia is in the process of standing one up. Um, that there is not currently, just going back to Maryland specifically, there's not currently one in Montgomery County. Um, just at least from the conversations we had, um, when the county executive was at the tour, nobody knew of one that was here. Um, and then there are several around, several, I don't know how many, you know, but there are many around the country. Um, and there are, um, national organizations, um, that help, uh, nonprofit developers and, and you know, and municipalities, um, put together these types of community land trusts.
Do you know right offhand if any of them are more or less the size of Kensington? I mean, we're quite a lot smaller than College Park, of course, and a whole different dynamic.
Yeah, I don't know. And of course, um, Kensington is also unique in that we're a, a small municipality and a very large, um, you know, metro county and area.
Okay, and, um, what is the name of the broker handling this matter?
Uh, it said Brian McCaffrey?
McCarthy.
McCarthy.
Brian McCarthy, okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Alright, I'm not seeing any other hands. Counsel, do you have any other questions? Nope. Okay, all right. Well, we'll keep everybody, uh, up to date. Um, and you'll probably reach out to Artie maybe, uh, later this week. And, uh, maybe we can find out about the, uh, whether, how many other people had bid on it. Okay. It would be helpful too to find out about those two other, uh, lots. And, um, and also the, um, um, the timeframe of which, and then of course what we can do to, to help stay engaged. Okay, good, thanks. Right, uh, this point, it may be something after the holidays, but, uh, we can maybe set up a meeting with him. It'd be great. All right, so let's move on down to number two. Um, Nate, are you handling, handling that one, number two?
Um, I'm happy to start. I think Connor and I can tag team it.
Okay.
All right, so, um, this relates to one of the recommendations that's coming out of this TLC grant that we did on the Connecticut Avenue corridor. Um, it was kind of left for, to look into more detail later. Um, the, the consultant started to look into the issue. It was a big issue identified, um, in the analysis, in the study, which is essentially how to deal with the Connecticut Avenue University split. And also which then would affect, would affect the, uh, Howard Avenue on up, including, uh, Pliers Mill, Metropolitan. Um, the whole area right there from, basically, you could consider the whole Connecticut Avenue corridor then as you start to consider the ripple effects of any changes made at that split. But the idea is to figure out a way to deal with a couple of issues. One is when the Summit Avenue Extended is eventually built and it terminates there, it's already, it's already a, a pedestrian and bicyclist nightmare to be able to cross, um, right there in and around that area. And it's very inconvenient to go further north or south to do the cross, but we did a walkthrough last week and it took seven minutes just to get across from university to Connecticut, just one side of the, you know, one side of the street, straight across. Um, and then adding Summit Avenue Extended, it's going to be really challenging. Um, there's also this issue of, um, that's been discussed and kind of punted around here and there, uh, over the last several decades, as I understand, talking to Matt and Tracy around, you know, improving the, the, the movement of the vehicular traffic there to a more of a kind of circular movement using some of the side streets and/or, um, exploring ideas like traffic circles and so on. So, um, that was put in the study and, um, you know, what we, we, we basically mentioned it to S H A every time we meet with them. And the last time we had our meeting with them a month ago, they said, yeah, yeah, we fully agree, you know, this needs to be addressed. Um, you guys have to do something first, basically is what we were told, that if the town doesn't take action, no one's going to do it. So, um, what we were proposing is to, um, to do an initial design and analysis, uh, feasibility study on that area to come up with some options and some, some sketches for what that could look like. That we could then take, you know, you know, we could work in partnership with S H A and M C D O T, who is another key partner via the Summit Avenue Extended project, um, and use that as a, a, a real kind of tangible discussion point. There's also, um, a real economic development component to this, that it's not just about traffic. It's not just about mobility and bicycling and pedestrian safety. And I'll let Connor, you know, jump in here.
So, as Nate and I were talking about this, knowing that with the B B P A, there was going to be a need for us to, to kind of push this thing forward with some sort of minimal design. We were also looking at it from a D R B standpoint of the Summit Avenue Extension is not just adding a road. That's a very simplistic way of thinking about what Summit Avenue will do. Um, Summit Avenue also creates a brand-new streetscape along Summit that allows us to incorporate and maybe make the best out of the, um, pedestrian and bicycle master, master plan and the B P P A work that the town is already doing. But it also now creates a whole new streetscape where when redevelopment occurs, these buildings don't have to be oriented to Connecticut Avenue, where many of those buildings on the west side of Connecticut Avenue only have a southbound egress. It would create a new streetscape off the rear where buildings can be oriented towards Summit Avenue and they would have north and southbound, uh, flow, which would also help with not only attracting redevelopment, but making a much more sensible and safer grid. And so what we had initially done a few months ago was we went to Park and Planning and asked if they would work with us to create an initial, just kind of what could Summit Avenue look like if it were redeveloped and we looked at massing pertaining to how the sector plan is laid out. And they were wonderful and they gave us something, but, you know, they don't want to put any touches on anything because they don't want to, you know, uh, put their proverbial thumb on the scale. So what they gave us was just a good sense of, okay, how, you know, what buildings might look and massing, just big squares. And what we'd like to do with money that was set aside in the C I P, you know, in last year's budget, is look at what's kind of called like a ten percent design. So taking the guidelines of what Nate just described, but then also offering this input around the redevelopment potential along Summit Avenue. And what might, you know, just asking a, 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 a design firm to put, you know, ten percent of the work in, what might and could it look like to have this new pedestrian interchange, the bike lanes and a Summit Avenue? Um, and the mixed-use redevelopment pertaining to our, our sector plan. So Nate and I are kind of merging our two thoughts here together to say if we're going to do, i- if we're going to engage a consultant to look at this, let's look at it holistically from both a pedestrian and, and bicycle safety, but also in, in incorporating our thoughts around economic development to help spur some of that discussion with the county.
Yep, and, and, and the, um, and Connor mentioned the B P P A, this BIPPA process. Um, this is the, the state-sponsored planning process that we apply to. And now is kicked off as of last week. We did the walkthrough with some of the state officials. Um, and the consultant that they brought on, Farren Peers, to do, um, a, a quick walkthrough of the, of the area. And I think it's a really opportune time because that study or that planning process can be as detailed as we, we can help it be. Uh, they have a pretty standard template that they can produce a plan. Um, but we can push it in certain directions and right now is the time to do that. So, you know, we've already started to push it to be very participatory. So there'll be a kind of a, um, a work session with public input and public engagement, which usually doesn't happen. And I think that if we push it to get to some detailed design by putting in some of our own money, um, maybe piggybacking off of the firm that's already doing some of the work for the BIPPA planning process, we have an opportunity to really, you know, we have a captive audience because S H A is doing the BIPPA with us. Um, and there's a committee of other transportation partners that are involved with that. So I think we have a really good opportunity to do it, to do it now and just, you know, just go for it and not keep talking about it. So, you know, that's, that's the update on that. I don't know, Matt has also been in some of these conversations. I'm not sure if you have anything else to add.
I think you both summarized it well. Um, you know, I guess staff this evening is just looking for support to move forward with maybe putting together an R F P, uh, for a ten percent design. Um, and, uh, we'll see where, where we go from there.
Yeah, this, this is something I've wanted for a long time. I know we, we reached out to Park and Planning and as Connor said, they, they provided something, but it wasn't quite what we really wanted. Um, I think people have a hard time visualizing, you know, this, and I think, um, especially that intersection, uh, where, um, that Nate talked about definitely needs some work. And I think we need to, uh, really get a, a good feeling of what this could look like and, um, to benefit, you know, all those stakeholders.
Okay, I just have a question. I want to make sure I understand the scope. So it is, sounds like from, um, the description that you both shared, that it would be both sort of the intersection, which is a generous word, how many roads come together at Pliers Mill University in Connecticut and Summit, looking at that area, but also it sounds like the Summit Avenue Extension. And not just the terminus of the Summit Avenue Extension, or are you thinking of just the terminus?
Um, I think to Connor's points that it would be, it would include this economic development concept in the, um, in the Summit Avenue Extended portion too, not just the terminus.
On that northwest side.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and then also just in terms of, um, cost and timing, it sounds like you could, we, there's an estimate of around fifty thousand or so to do the study. Um, and, um, I mean, I'm fully in support of moving forward. I think, like you said, we should, this, we've been talking about this. You've done all the legwork with, uh, with, with the BIPPA. Let's take this to the next step. Um, I just wanted to hear what you've gathered in terms of how long it might take, how many months to, to get the study.
We didn't talk about timing, but I have spoken with some people, um, on the pedestrian bicycling access safety working group who've done studies like this. They thought it should be less than six months, so we should be able to do it according to them, according to preliminary estimates, pretty quickly because a lot of the data are there. You might have to do some traffic analysis, but for fifty thousand, it wouldn't be too involved in some preliminary safety crash analysis. But, um, it could be done pretty quickly and especially if it's, especially if it's with a firm that's familiar with the area and has already.
That would be great. But it can be months, not years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I would like to think we'd have it by early spring, maybe if we, because we're going to have to approve the R F P, uh, in January. And then I don't know how long that's going to take, um, to get a couple of bids. And then it's got to come back and be approved by the council so that we're going to take a few months, just, just getting that done.
Yeah.
So maybe more like summer.
Yeah, and, and the whole, if, if we do link it, um, to this BIPPA process, the BIPPA, I think, Matt, they said it needs to be wrapped up by October, right? So we, we have a little bit of wiggle room if we're pushing for the summer.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And just, um, one more thought, which I know I've, um, I've shared out loud with a couple of people musing about that intersection. It would be great if they could explore the feasibility of a roundabout in that area. I don't know how that would work with the Summit Avenue terminus, but some of you may have seen the recent article in the Washington Post, um, talking about roundabouts and, and that they've now collected more evidence showing that, you know, if the, the, if the setting is, is right, they can move traffic, they can be safer for pedestrians. And so, and I recall when we did our walk, uh, walking audit, um, you know, several months ago, there was at least somebody, um, from the transportation community there who, who was raising that possibility. So it would be great if that was one of the options that they could preliminarily explore.
Yeah. We'll send, yeah, a, um, something from the county that has three alternatives for the terminus at University in Connecticut, uh, which I, I'm not sure it's exactly roundabout as opposed to a triangle about. But, um, I think it sort of encompasses what you're thinking and, and, you know, as long as this, um, ten percent program sort of, you know, communicates with the county, I think it would be useful to figure out if, if one of those alternatives is, is, you know, workable for all of the goals that we have. But I'll, I'll, I'll email that to you offline.
Yeah, please share it. If I, I don't know if I've seen it, but also, Matt, when you, when you do the R F P, if you need, um, us, you need Connor and myself to look at it or help with it, or someone from, or folks from the working group, happy to do so.
Sure, the, the good news is I think we can work off the Hagerstown B P P A. Uh, I think it would be very similar to that. Um, just for heads up, I don't think we'll have this ready for the council. Just for heads up, I don't think we'll have this ready for the council by January. We're finishing up the Bridge RFP. So we need to get that done first. So we're probably looking at February for this.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Are there any questions in the audience? Joe, I think your hand went up.
Yeah, Nate, I was just wondering if there's, since the Summit Avenue Extension was, was mentioned, is there any latest reasonable timetable for completion of that?
I think.
Discuss project?
Tracy, Tracy has said it'll be finished in her lifetime. Is that right?
Barely. Thirty-one is, I think was the final date right now.
That's 2031 or 31 years from now.
No, 2031.
Or, or either.
Yeah.
They just, most recently, Joe, just for everybody's benefit, in the last county council budget, that project got moved, what we call to the right two years. So where it was slated for 2025 to begin their CIP process, which would allow them to start acquiring the properties that they've identified would need to be acquired by the county. That process now got moved to 2027. And so that's the earliest that they would begin that. And then the construction window would be within there with a completion timeline somewhere in FY 2031.
Well, that's, that's, that's a positive development because a couple of years ago was like out of the budget altogether, wasn't it?
Well, they, they were out of budget too, this past one, and we got it put back in.
So I will say was out of the budget. Mayor Tracy did a phenomenal job. Council member Andrew Friedson and, and a few others who heard our, our pleas to not let it be pulled out. The result was that it moved to the right a couple of years, but I do think part of this drive around the economic development standpoint stemmed from a conversation we had with the county executive, who, you know, hi- his familiarity with the project really was just as a roads project. You know, that's how he phrased it. And when we talked about that we understand that's adding roadway. But we talked about how that roadway provides a better, safer alternative to layer the ma- the bike master plan into, but also creates a whole new streetscape that allows for, for redevelopment to occur along Summit and not Connecticut. And takes these huge sections of property that would be, if done under mixed use and only really accessible off of Connecticut Avenue, really kind of cumbersome. And this actually, I think improves the possibility for redevelopment. You know, the comment from the county executive was, oh, well, we've never looked at it that way. And so this was our, why I wanted to fold this into what Nate presented today was at least as a starting point, since we're already going to look to examine that area to fold in the economic development view or lens so that we can start demonstrating from our angle to the county and other stakeholders, why it is not just a roadway, right? That what we are creating is a new artery that in fact activates a whole new section of Kensington.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's see any hands. Okay, so let's move on to number three. The pickleball court. This is something that has been talked about for a while. There's been some requests made to me and I think to Connor, I think somebody had talked to you about it as well. And trying to find some locations. So we have identified an area in which we can look at. Alex, can you bring that area up?
Sure. Okay, can you see my screen?
Mm-hmm. Can. Um, so there's the spirit, yeah. So we.
My mouse.
Yeah. Uh, we own the parking lot where the cursor is. Well, that's right there is a parking lot off Kensington Parkway, which the town owns and attached to that is an open green space that we've not gone out and measured. We want to, Alex is going to go out there. Hopefully next week and look at the space to see how many courts we could actually get. I know we had talked about St. Paul Park, but that would require sharing with the basketball. And I don't think we want to get into that. That's, you know, that's another usage that's actually used quite a bit. And also I don't want balls, you know, hitting small children over on the playground equipment. So that's the area in which we're looking at. Uh, council, do you have any comments about us going ahead and exploring this and getting a cost estimate?
I have a question.
Try it in.
So in terms of doing the measurements to figure out where one could be situated, when you talk about green space, do you mean? I guess my question is would any trees have to be removed or?
Actually, I don't think so. It looks like there's a tree there, but that would not have to be moved or taken down. There's actually, uh, it's actually, if you've been to the, the Fit Fest that Spirit Clubs puts together, they actually put up a, a tent and it, in the green space that's there. And it's quite actually large and there are no, I would say any trees that are along the side are mostly trashy trees and we could, and shrubbery that's just growing there. We could actually clean that up quite a bit and put in some, some better trees. I mean, it really is, there are no big trees there for sure in that area that would have to come down. Thank you. Any other questions?
So the, no, I just point out that, you know, a resident neighbor who's a friend. We've been talking about this for a while because, you know, the growing popularity of pickleball and just trying to figure out, you know, Kensington is, it, it just seems like something that would fit really, really well in our town. And where could we put it? So I applaud, you know, I, I had not thought about this space. I, I knew that we had the parking lot until I looked at, I'm looking at GIS right now, just how sizable that lot is. But I, you know, my hope is I, I would like to explore this. I, I think this could be fairly centrally located within the town. You know, it's nearby the, the Mark Station where people are, you know, pedestrians can easily cross the street to get there. Hopefully there would be an RRFB somewhere along that section of Metropolitan Avenue.
One day.
So. But I, I do, I'd like to move forward with exploring the, you know, the feasibility of this site.
Well, I know noise came up. Darren had forwarded me an article about noise. I think this was in Arlington County of which I grew up in. But this is actually a butts, a commercial property. As, and it's the backside of, of the buildings that are on Metropolitan. Of course, the office building is there. I think it's far enough away and of course they're not outside, they're inside. And then there is housing, but it's probably, what would you say that is a football field? From between the houses in that space, maybe a little less.
Oh, maybe a little less.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm trying to measure it here on Google Earth.
So maybe.
The only time I've been down there where I felt.
What was that, Darren?
The, the only time I've sorry, the only, I was gonna, the only time I've been there where I felt like noise was a, a little much was when they were heavily amplified with speakers and microphones.
Yeah, that was the Fit Fest.
Normal noise is, you know, you're far enough away. I, I was parked on this side of the road and feeling like it's a pretty good distance from. But, you know, let, let's see what, what the space offers and then, you know, what, what its impact on needed parking would be.
Yeah, I, I mean, we own the lot, although I believe, Matt, those spaces are leased, is that correct?
Correct. So there's 11 spaces, which includes a handicap accessibility space. They are leased to a number of businesses, specifically trick trucks. We have ordered a survey for the property, just to clarify and confirm the boundaries. We anticipated to have that done in about two weeks. So we'll have a little more information on how we can proceed at that time.
And then there is street parking, of course, and then hopefully people will want to walk and not, you know, drive down.
So just looking at this on Google Earth, it's roughly from the center part of that grassy area, it's about 200 feet to the closest house.
Okay.
I would, I would add on the issue of sort of noise and parking, I, when this council agenda came out, I did have a, and a neighbor share with me a Wall Street Journal article about pickleball noise. I don't know if it's the same article you were looking at. But if it seems like this is a viable location, then I think we should do some specific outreach to the, even though this is budding a commercial area, it is, you know, pretty close to residential, residential area. So I think we should do some specific outreach to the residents there to make sure they're aware if this, if this plan is in development.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. No, we would definitely do that. I think we just wanted to get, it's, you know, just been talked about. So before we go to too much trouble, I think it's a good idea anyway to have the property survey, just to make sure we know exactly what we, we own. But I think we just didn't, I didn't want to move forward with this until we had, you know, better input from the council. I will open it up to the public if anybody has any questions. I can't see hands right now with the. Thank you.
Chris put a question in the chat.
Oh, what did? I know Jody's hand is at, what did Chris say? Let me see.
Says, assuming Town of Kensington moves ahead with a pickleball court there, would it be limited to Town, Town of Kensington residents? Would reservations be required?
That's actually something we've sort of talked about. It'd be, our initial vision was kind of like the dog park. We actually don't advertise the dog park. It's not even on our website. It's more just word of mouth. So and that, that's quite, that's worked out pretty well. We created a small dark dog park, a little ad hoc committee. And just to get it going. And now it just pretty much works on its own. And I think that's what we would hope would be for the pickleball court would be just to let it be managed by those who use it. Don't think we want to get into making reservations and certainly it would be difficult to make it just T O K residents only. I'm not sure that would be, would be good. Uh, Jody?
I'm the one who, one of the people who very much looking forward to this happening. I went and looked at the property. It's pretty flat and there weren't a lot of trees. Certainly not on the main part of the, of the grassy field. I think, you know, it was my estimate just from looking at it and knowing pickleball measurement, court measurements that we could get two to three courts, definitely two, three might be pushing it. And in talking to the mayor about it, we had talked about it being fenced in similar to the dog park. It's also, it isn't near, that near the houses. So, you know, pickleball court noise is the thunk of the, of the ball and it goes fast back and forth. So that's, that's the noise that they're, they're talking about. There wouldn't be lights, so it wouldn't be, you know, nobody would be playing in the evening. Although in the summertime, pickleballers do get out there pretty early in the morning because they want to beat the heat. So, but I'm very much in favor, in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Any other comments? Seeing any other hands? Okay. All right. Well, Matt, let's go ahead and get the survey up. Darren, did you have something?
I, I just was going to pull from the chat. Penny Beerhoff is asking, would there be space available for the annual Spirit Club Foundation Fitness Festival?
Uh, yes, it, uh, there would be. They would just use the inside of the pickleball court for that particular event. But I did actually hear from Spirit Club, they're actually looking for maybe using another location. I haven't spoken to the new director yet about that, so I'm not exactly sure. Maybe they want to spread out a little bit more. I know they're actually pretty confined there. So let me look into that. But yeah, the, the court would still be open for that type of use.
Yeah, I, I, I think at this point, we're mainly in the high level exploratory phase. We don't know how many courts we can fit, what the cost of each court would be. I, I agree in general that the, the dog park model has worked well. You know, as a, as a frequent user of it, I will say I, I estimated, you know, 95% of the people who come to it are outside of town. Which when you have a dog park is fine because the, the more dogs, the better. I, I think though, there's a possibility that, that if we, you know, opened it to the town and, and opened it, you know, just to first come, first served. And knowing that, that, you know, as Jody calls them, pickleballers probably are active Facebook group participants that we could, we could draw from a, a much broader area and find that it's not available to the people whose, you know, tax dollars went to the construction of it. So I, but, but we can always change it. You know, we can adapt as the need grows.
Well, and I, I think that's the model of the dog park was to create that ad hoc group so they can kind of, you know, of residence. So they can work on how they want to set it up initially and I, I, I just don't want to let, have the office staff having to reserve the pickleball courts. I don't think, I don't want to get into that. So it is a, a growing popular sport. And I know the county has turned a lot of tennis courts, is that right, Jody, into pickleball courts?
That was, that was my next, my next, actually why I raised my hand again. I mean, we have those, those tennis courts on Kensington Parkway that are not lined for pickleball. Is there any way to get those lined for pickleball?
I mean, that's a matter of just contacting parks. I mean, we could, you know, see if they would be interested in doing that. I don't, I don't live over there, so I don't see how well they're used.
Yeah, I've ridden my bike by there many, many, many times and it's not used, it's not heavily used, those courts.
Part of the reason they're not heavily used is actually they need to be repaired. The, the the surface is buckling. One of them is really bad. The other one has small cracks. So actually we should probably reach out to parks just to see if they're on the
If they're on the fixed lift. Well, that may be an opportunity to ask if they've considered, you know, adding the pickleball element into that.
Okay. But ju- just so you ha- have a kind of idea, Newport Mill Middle School has tennis courts in the back and on Saturday and Sundays, I'm on a listserv of over 200 people who play pickleball there on, on the weekends when school is not in session. And they bring, they, in those cases, the tennis courts are lined for pickleball. They bring their own nets and set them up. You can get two pickleball courts on, on one tennis court. And there's a lot of game, a lot of games going on. And that's, that's over 200 people on that listserv.
Do they organize themselves?
Yes. Yeah. And so they just, you know, they send, you know, just kind of how like the dog park listserv works now. Who's, who wants to go there? Nine AM Saturday morning and people respond, I'll be there, I'll be there. And, you know, so they get, they get the group going. And you know, and then if it's raining, they'll say, oh, let's play at two o'clock. And so, you know, they, yeah, totally organized by themselves. I think they've been, I just joined it recently. I think that they've been around for a while.
Is, what's the typical game length of pickleball? Thirty minutes, forty five?
Oh, no, 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 no. Ten, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, you play till 11. And so people go in and out, you wait, you know, you'll wait and you'll get in a game and in another 10, 15 minutes. I mean, I, I go over to Wheaton, all the rec centers in Kensington have pickleball time. And so over at Wheaton Rec Center, they have five courts. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, you can play pickleball there from 11:30 to 2:30. There's probably 30, 40 people who show up and you go in and out of games.
Okay.
I mean, so a lot of people are participating in this game.
Right. Okay.
You can do it when you're old.
And I hear now the young people want to play too. It's even more competition.
It's terrible.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. Uh, Joe?
Yeah, actually in Kensington Cabin Park, those tennis courts are used fairly heavily and pickleball players are there rather often. I mean, maybe not so much now with the weather having turned, but, uh, spring, summer and fall, they're, they're there in numbers and, uh, that recently has included pickleball players, just definitely.
They just must bring their own net then and set it up. So.
No, they use the tennis court net.
Okay.
Yeah, you can use a tennis court net. It's a little higher.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Well, I think we've done enough with pickleball. Okay. So thank you very much. All right. We'll move down to Greenscape. Anne?
Thank you. I just wanted to share an update on, um, the Greenscape Committee plans. Um, we've now met a couple of times and, and have, I, I think, good consensus that the Greenscape Committee would like to focus on enhancing and preserving Kensington's tree canopy. You know, we've been fortunate to be a designated tree city for years. Um, we've had, uh, dedicated, you know, budget to support replacement of trees, the street trees, for example. And our assistant to the town manager, Alex, has recently become certified as, um, state arborist, I guess is the term. No?
No, not quite. I'm quite qualified for that. Oh, so it's a roadside tree care expert? Which sounds fancier than it is. I can just, I don't have to wait for the state to, uh, give me a permit.
Well, we're, we're we're thrilled that you took, sat for the course and the test, um, because that means that the town can more actively manage uh, removal of ailing trees and planting new ones on the street, um, right of way. But the Greenscape Committee is very interested in doing more, um, to help with the tree canopy with climate change, the, you know, intense rains that we face, the high temperatures. Trees can help mitigate some of those effects, but also of course are important for carbon capture. And the committee is, um, going to focus on a few different things. And we have some Greenscape Committee members here who can, who can speak to this as well. We have a couple of volunteers, uh, who are going to inventory trees in our town parks. So we have a better understanding of, um, what's there, what might, we might want to think about for care and for, um, adding additional trees or replacing ailing trees. But also there's strong interest in doing a lot of education outreach to private property owners. And so much of the town's tree canopy is on private property. And so we're looking at doing, you know, a series of educational articles. Making sure people are aware of the county's program where you can have, uh, native shade trees planted for free on your property. Uh, and we're also, um, you know, one of our committee members, Catherine Wood is here, who's sort of taken the charge on becoming a certified weed warrior. And I want to thank, um, Catherine and Leslie and many others who helped out with, um, an October effort to clean up weeds, non-native invasive species that are choking trees along the Jane Plank, um, Cabin Park area. And a lot of work was done there. We'd really like to get more people, um, active in the Weed Warrior Program and working to protect the trees along Silver Creek that runs through town. So, Mayor Tracy, do you want to add anything to this since you've been part of these discussions as well?
Uh, no, I, I just, I think it's a really great direction for the Greenscape Committee. Um, trees are so important to us as a tree city and I'm, I'm really, I think everyone on the Greenscape is very engaged with, uh, wanting to, um, to be involved with, uh, making sure we maintain our tree canopy and that everyone knows how to take care of their trees.
Great. So that's the update I wanted to share. Um, any council members have questions?
Just one, um, sorry, I was, I'm looking at the Tree Montgomery Program. After we do the inventory, especially of, of town properties, just out of curiosity, maybe this is to Matt, like if, if there is town property that we own that we wanted shade trees, would the county provide them to us? Do we, do we leverage that program?
I mean, that's something I can ask them. I mean, we have plenty of, we have budget to plant our own trees. Um, I mean, I can ask the county. Uh, I don't know. Maybe Anne knows if they meet, if they meet our standards, we won't plant anything beneath a two-inch caliper. So I don't know what the county standard is on plantings.
My guess.
These are large trees that they're count, they're trying to, according to this, trees that will eventually grow to a, you know, quite a large tree.
But when the actual, the actual planting size, does it list the actual planting size?
I'm looking right now about the trees. Well, we can go through this and that. I'm just curious. I know we have a, a wonderful budget. That's part of the tree pro, you know, Tree City USA. But, you know, there might be partnership, especially, and I'm just thinking of some of the areas around parks where we might, it might be advantageous to have some of these larger trees.
Yeah. And the state forester has a program as well, the Tremendous Program, um, that we could also use if the county program, program doesn't work, but um, you know, with respect to just, you're, you're thinking of the mature size of the tree. Yeah, we, we have a program in place to plant trees that will replace the tree canopy. So.
On town property?
Correct. And within the right of way and the town property, yes. Where we don't have any authority is on private property, which is what the Greenscape Committee will be working on.
And, and the Greenscape Committee is not looking at the street trees, just to be clear too. The street trees that were, that's already under a program that Alex oversees and so that's pretty much maintained and.
Yeah, this county one is planting trees. When they plant them, they're already 10 feet tall. They will grow to 50 feet or higher. Predominantly oaks, maples and elms.
Yeah, but that's a, that question Connor, I mean, when we look further into Tree Montgomery and talk with those folks as well as we can now talk to the Tremendous Program that Matt just mentioned. We can learn more about how they, um, work with municipalities on sort of publicly controlled areas as well. Thank you. Um, anyone from the Greenscape Committee who's here tonight, want to add anything to the discussion or the overview?
I'm not seeing any hands.
I, I do have a question. I was trying to come in, but, um, Tracy, you mentioned that the, this does not include the street trees. I was, I was wondering though, if they're going out and inventorying. Is it possible to include a quick review of where there might be opportunity to add trees around the, along the streets?
I'm going to let Matt, uh, since he's the one that wanted not to include street trees, I'm going to let him answer your question. I do agree.
I have asked the Greenscape Committee to, uh, avoid street trees. Uh, we, we have a pretty aggressive plan for them. Uh, we're, we're quite limited on what we can plant and where we can plant, uh, what we can and where we can. Uh, it's dependent by the, uh, Public Service Commission through the 1911 roadside tree bill. So, you know, Alex is managing that. Uh, we're currently in a planting phase right now. We planted, I believe, 18 trees on Friday. Uh, we have a second planting scheduled next week. But, uh, you know, if there's anyone on this call that has a location that they'd like a tree planted in the right of way, we'll definitely take a look at it. Uh, just because there's an opening, keep in mind, doesn't mean we can fit a tree or one that is appropriate for the location. Uh, we ran into that problem last week where a resident had requested a tree. And it was too close to the storm drain catch, catch basin and utility lines. So, you know, there's always other issues that, that, uh, happen that we can't plant a tree.
Could it be another type of tree? Could it be another type of tree, another species?
Or just not for the, like, not for this location that they had. So we, we suggested that they, um, plant a tree in their front yard on private property. Uh, they said they'd get back to us.
We should make sure they know about Tree Montgomery. If the sizes, if the space is large enough. But, um, Nate, I did want to share in response to your question um, that, that I think as part of the educational outreach to residents, the Greenscape Committee would include information about how the town manages street trees and what the, you know, constraints and opportunities are for planting and the types of trees that are approved and how to request, you know, getting one added, um, because I, I don't think that's well understood within the community.
I agree.
The long-term goal is to actually create a tree handbook on how, and that would be given to every homeowner that they could, you know, to really understand, um, how you, how you do trees in Kensington or how we do trees and how you can help. So.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Anne. Um, I'm sorry, but you also are number five. So, um,
Right onto that one. Sure. I wanted to make sure everyone is aware, um, you, you may have read in last month's Town Journal that in response, um, to the concerning trend we've seen with racist and anti-Semitic incidents in Montgomery County and indeed here in Kensington, not just with the St. Paul Park, anti-black, white supremacist flyers with razor blades, but also a very disturbing incident at Temple Emmanuel, um, uh, that happened during a children's Shabbat service with anti-Semitic harassment. Um, we really, um, have, have, uh, talked quite a bit within the Kensington Racial Justice Committee about the need to engage more residents and making sure people are aware, um, of what's happening, but also more importantly about what we can do as a community, um, to deter these types of acts of, of hate and bigotry. And so we are moving forward with a community training event with the Anti-Defamation League uh, and, uh, law enforcement. And this will be January 18th of seven to eight 30 approximately at Town Hall. We, um, really hope for a strong turnout from our community so that we can all learn together and we can all, um, uh, develop ideas for how we're going to work together to make sure we have a safe community for, for all of us. And, um, the format will be, you know, briefing and educational from the regional representatives from the ADL and also our law enforcement officers. There will be time for Q and A, uh, with the community and then time for, uh, tabletop discussions. We are going to be doing a lot of outreach, both, uh, to civic groups, the business community, faith community, um, our schools. Uh, this training will be appropriate for, for teenagers roughly 13 and up. And students who participate will be able to earn SSL hours. Uh, so I really encourage you to attend, to register to attend and, uh, take what we're able to learn there together, particularly how we can work together, how we can have conversations with our kids, with, with our neighbors and others about what's happening and what we can do as a community. So we will be sending out information to all residents. There will be, you know, information going out over email and social media, I'm sure. Um, but I want to make sure everyone is aware that that has been, um, scheduled for January 18th.
And are we supposed to register for that event, Anne?
Yes. And with Alex's help and Carrie Anne's help, we are creating a registration page so that we can plan accordingly, um, for how many, um, people will be there.
Thank you.
And thank you, um, for the comment in the chat about including Brookwood. Penelope.
Good. Council, any questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? Okay. Not seeing anything else. Um, so before we move on to, uh, from the staff, I just want to quickly go through and give the, the council any opportunity to speak uh, on anything that's not on the agenda. Uh, Connor, start with you.
Sure. Just a few updates from around the business community. Um, uh, it's it, most everybody's heard about, but I want to make sure that people have, um, K-Town Bistro closed recently. And that space is being taken over by Tacos Don Perez, which has been a very popular and successful mostly food truck based business. This will be their first brick and mortar. So you've probably already seen the sign on the, on the window, but uh, there will be an opportunity, um, to go in and order and sit at a table there or go in and order it for takeout. That'll be, you know, another wonderful opportunity for, for dining in around Kensington. Kensington, but right outside and popular to many, uh, news that China Gourmet is closing, just hit the internet. Uh, so it looks like they're, at least according to what they've been putting on the tables, they're looking to close um, at the end of the year, so December 31st. And according to, uh, their little write-up, they are just going to change. So what, what's happening is a lot of their longtime staff have been there for decades and they're all retiring. And so they realized China Gourmet, a lot of it was driven by the people who worked there for many, many years. So since they're retiring, they're going to change the whole concept up. What they at least stated in the write-up is that the concept would be uh, American fair, uh, but with a sports theme. So I think there's a bit of a to be determined with that.
Sports bar type thing?
I mean, they didn't seem to want to put those two words together, but I think there's, you know, I think one could connect the dots that there would be food with televisions.
Any Irish type of bar?
Don't tease me. Um, the next is the cafe at the Old Mizel Lumber Yard, which is where Modena is. This is Metropolitan Avenue right by the Mark Station, uh, at the terminus of, of St. Paul Street. That has been going, uh, you know, being renovated for months and months and months. I know there was a lot of wonderment of would it ever open? Um, I actually walked through the space last week with the director of Modena. They had a few supply chain issues, but they are, they were finishing up the trim around the windows. They were waiting on a few counters, um, and then permits. And so her estimate is that just after the new year, as it gets into January, that the cafe would be opening and it's going to be run by Modena, by their food service. So it would be, you know, coffee and teas and, you know, drinks and then more grab and go, right? It would be focused on, uh, coming in and getting something, just sitting in, in meeting with friends, or if you're hopping the train or, um, you know, on your way kind of maybe to the farmer's market. So expectation is that that cafe will open in January. And then the rest, I'm sure you'll cover, are just a bunch of thank yous. So I'll let you do them.
Okay. Um, one item that you didn't, either didn't know or that Tumbleweed is going to close. Tumbleweed is a, a gift store that's behind, uh, Schroes Snyder's. And Amy let me know that she is closing, um, at the end of January. Um, they're going to keep a, um, um, they're going to have, they have a warehouse on West Howard and they're going to go online, but they hope to open another shop maybe on, um, the east side of town or the south side of town, depending where you are. And, uh, so I'm going to give you some homework, maybe talk to the owner of the Johnson Shopping Center when there's an opening that, um, she would love to be able to go in there.
Okay. I'd be happy to talk to them just to maybe give her, uh, I'm sure they can kind of give her a timeline of.
Yes, a contact information, you know, maybe by the spring or the summer, if there's an opportunity there, she'd like, be interested. So.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Darren?
Um, I'll just briefly say that something's on the horizon. We, uh, further grappling with how to adjust the, uh, rush hour through traffic restrictions on the north side of town. During the pandemic, we didn't have the traffic to justify the studies. We, meaning the county, um, and, and North Kensington Heights. The traffic is back with a vengeance. The county has conducted a, a traffic count along the portion of Fergie Avenue that is outside of town. And, um, the response from the, the county official that we talked with, uh, a couple of weeks ago was, um, it was, I think it was 192 cars per hour on a street that is narrow, curved and, um, has a huge, you know, it, it's not flat either. So it's a, kind of like a, a perfect storm of a bad road to have that much traffic on. The request from the county is that we move our, as a result of annexation, we can do this. But we move our, do not enter signage up to university at St. Paul. And so if, when the county makes that kind of request of us, and in light of what I conceive, you know, whenever I'm out walking my dog, that's something that I, I want to bring to the traffic committee and then bring back to the council as, as a potential um, solution or mitigation of, of the, the, the traffic problem up there. So we'll, we'll, we'll schedule another traffic committee meeting and, and So we'll, we'll, we'll schedule another traffic committee meeting and, and let you know where things go.
Okay. Thank you. Nate?
Mobility and traffic committee. Thank you, Darren.
MTC.
Just kidding. So I wasn't going to actually give an update except except for the, the thing that you shared with me, Darren, yesterday you got in the mail, I think relates to this. There's do, they're doing, the county's doing a greenway study from Georgia Avenue along McComas to terminate at St. Paul. So this is along the lines of what we proposed in the TLC grant to do a community greenway, which is basically marked designated roads, kind of traffic calming so that it's easier for bikes and, and people walking to kind of flow through the neighborhood. But I mentioned it because it affects some people directly on the north side of town. And then also if we were to move forward with some that would go up Lexington, you could imagine, you could imagine it would potentially connect with this greenway down the road. So just wanted to give everyone about that.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Anne?
Thanks. I just want to share two upcoming community events. This Thursday, the 15th at seven o'clock, the Racial Justice Committee will be presenting a documentary film called I Too that was produced by a local Kensington resident, Tony Silverfeld. This film shares the, the story of historical stories of racially motivated political violence and, and pulls that forward to what we're seeing today. There'll be a discussion with Tony, one of the producers after the film and Baby Cat will be providing beer. We'll have some non-alcoholic beverages on hand as well, and there will be popcorn. So we encourage people to come. If you can just RSVP. The details are in the, the latest town e-blast. And then secondly, our annual town menorah lighting will be this Sunday at six o'clock. The donut order has been placed. We expect to have a lot of community members there. We would love to see a good turnout and hopefully the weather will cooperate. And then lastly, I just wanted to say when I was in Town Hall a few days ago, I was impressed to see how many people had donated toys for Toys for Tots. And I wanted to really thank the town staff for, for coordinating all of that. It was really nice to see.
Yeah, I actually asked Alex to give me a little update on that under the staff report. So hopefully we'll hear a little bit more about that. So. Anyway, well, as Connor said, we have lots of thank yous to give out. There's just way too many. For every event we have, there's always a lot of people behind it. Sometimes it's staff, sometimes it's council, and sometimes it's our town volunteers or our town business owners. So it's really, so you know, as we come out and enjoy our, our events, please be sure to say thank you to all those who have participated and to make it happen. So just give a couple out shout-outs right now for the K-Town ladies for doing the light up K-Town. We've got Mark and McInerney for, you know, doing the, the shredded day. And then they're also doing caroling around the fountain. We have for the tree lighting, we can thank our staff for putting that on for us as well as the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department. We have the menorah lighting, we have Temple Emmanuel, and is it Beth Fell? Is that who's coming?
Yeah.
So we have a, a second synagogue that will be joining us. And if you've never been to the menorah lighting, I would encourage you to come. I'm a Methodist, but I love going to the menorah lighting. It's one of my favorite events. It's festive and it really just full of families and it's such a great event. So I encourage you all to, to come and be part of the community. And I know the Kensington Historical Society has put on an event, which was very well attended, I think by Zoom and some in person as well. And also the town businesses put on the holiday open house. I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but just know that all these events don't happen by themselves. So please either volunteer or just make an effort to come and support the event. So. So we will go ahead and move on. So the town manager and staff, Matt, Alex, Susan?
Alex, why don't you start with, you want, for Toys for Tots?
Sure. Happy to start. So we were registered as a designated collection site for Toys for Tots and we started collecting November 1st. And we had two pretty large bins that were filled to the brim and then some. Anne walked into my office and she said it looked like Santa's workshop in there. So thank you to all the residents who donated. We barely fit all the toys. We took them back this morning to Toys for Tots and they barely fit in the code car. I was holding some in my lap. So the volunteers are really happy to get all the toys. So thank you to everyone who donated.
I think, I think that's the best collection I've seen in a really long time. I mean, people really did come out and did a, did a great job volunteering the toys this year.
Counsel, I only have one update. WRA Engineering has passed along the RFP for the Kensington Bridge repairs. The town attorney has the draft and we will be meeting on Friday to, to get this back over to WRA. Our plan is to have the RFP posted sometime in January with bids, bids released in March.
Susan, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Matt, did you want to mention the new installs at Flynn and?
Sure. Also, one other thing, leaf collection ends on Friday. If you, if you have any leaves, please get them out tomorrow or Wednesday to give the crew enough time to go around the town. And then also at Reinhardt Park and Flynn Park, we have two new additions. We have added a sway swing to each park. So if you get a chance, please go over there. We know at least the Brookwood School girls enjoy the one over at Reinhardt Park when we opened it up on Friday. And, and the one at Flynn Park is, is kind of behind the fountain over by some of the benches. So.
Well, there was, I told Matt today, there was a mom with her toddler and her baby on the sway swing today. And I thought it just was really, really nice. So I think we, we grownups like to swing too. So it's nice with our kids. So. Okay. Any questions about, from the council reports or staff? Before we move on to public appearances? Okay. Thank you all. Okay. Next up on the agenda is public appearances. It's the opportunity to bring up something that's not on the agenda. Joe?
Yeah, I was waiting for Jack, but I guess he's not going to join us tonight. I was wondering, Matt, if you could tell us when the bridge work, if all goes well with the request for proposals and then the bids and everything, when is this going to start finally? If all goes well.
My hope is within six months of issuing the bid, there will be MD and E Maryland Department of Environment permits required. We'll be working over about a water Silver Creek. So it is dependent on that, which is one of the reasons why we went with WRA Engineering to draft the RFP. They have experience working with not only Montgomery County and Montgomery Parks, but with MD and E with bridge work. Most recently down on Beach Drive.
And this would include all three bridges on the south side of town? Is that right?
Correct. All three bridges. Yes.
Okay. And which order is it likely that they'll begin to work on these bridges?
I'm not, I don't know at this time. We'll know once we have a contractor in place. They'll set together a, a construction plan. We'll bring it back to the mayor and council and advise the public.
So maybe construction will begin end of next year, about nine, 10 months from now.
Uh, that would be ideal. Yeah.
Ideally. Okay. Anne, I didn't get a chance to ask about the tree inventory, which I think is a terrific idea. And I believe you even mentioned this when you were campaigning for the council seat. I was wondering who's going to be doing the inventory?
Uh, so one of our hardy volunteers is on the call, Catherine Wood. And Allison Oppenheim are the two Greenscape Committee members who stepped forward and we're lucky because I think they're both quite knowledgeable and Catherine has also been studying up on examples of how other communities have done this.
That's great. That's really terrific. You know, I really liked Nate's idea about expanding this just from, not from, not to include only the town parks, but to take a look at all town trees, just to get a sense of, of their health. And I think that would be a natural expansion of this inventory. I think it would make a lot of, a lot of good sense just to get a sense of how, how, how well the tree can, how the tree stock in town is, is looking. So I like that idea that he proposed, suggested.
Okay. Anything else? It's not. Okay. Does anybody else have a item that's not on the agenda? Okay. All right. So we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Mayor and council, for the third time this year, we bring to you resolution number R dash zero six dash 2022. A resolution of the mayor town council of Kensington authorizing the town manager to establish a corner clearance prohibition on the south side of Carroll Place from the projected west curb line of Hadley Place to a point 30 feet westward. On the west side of Hadley Place from the projected south curb line of Carroll Place to 40 feet southward. And on the south side of Montgomery Avenue from the projected east curb line of Hadley Place to point 25 east, 25 feet eastward. We had the opportunity to meet with the residents at this intersection last week, along with our traffic engineer and, and council member Lecter and council member Bartram. And we were able to come to an agreement on some of the corner clearances and, along with the vegetation management. So we're looking forward to, to installing these signs in the next couple of weeks to help with, to help with the traffic and pedestrian safety.
Okay. I want to thank Matt and Alex and Anne and Darren who went down and met with the residents. This is part of the nice thing about living in a municipality is that when residents do have concerns, that we can give them the personal touch and to, to reach out to them, to make sure everybody understands what's going to, what's happening and why it needs to happen. And I think that just makes everyone a little bit happier. Also, I know it took quite a number of times being on the agenda, but I think we're in a good space now to, to move it forward. Counsel, do you have any questions for Matt?
I have a question, only just to echo your sentence, Tracy. I, I wish I could have been there. I think it was the day I was getting my surgery. Or I would have, I'd love to have been there as well, but thanks everyone for, for, for being there and walking through it. I think we got to a good place.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. This doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance. It's, it's my apology for the comment. I, I did not know that Jack Gaffey had, had died at the end of November until just a couple of moments ago. And I'm really sorry to hear that news and he, he's, he was a great neighbor and he's going to be much missed. And I'm really sorry I did not know about that.
Yeah, we, we did announce it, but I know you came on a little, a little later. So you missed that. So yeah. We are going to miss him quite a bit. Thank you, Jack. Or thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay. So can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R dash zero six dash 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. All right. That concludes, we, our next meeting will also be by Zoom in January. The meeting will be January 9th at 7:00 PM. And I want to remind the council and those who are planning on being there for the Committee for Montgomery Breakfast on Friday at 7:00 AM. Is that correct?
Oh, no.
Yeah. AM. So, and look forward to seeing you all there. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Good night.